Mike, good evening, everybody. It's 5:37. I'm going to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, here in the boardroom and virtually. Nubs, could we have a roll call, please?
John Smith, here. Kristi Stellingworth.
Here.
Maria Volte.
Here. But I can't hear you guys.
Maria Volte.
Here.
Wendy Inkling.
Here.
Nubs Asprey, here. Paul Prue.
Here.
Brett Lawler.
Here.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here.
Now, you can all rise as we're able for the saying of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we come.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meeting. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Sample. As we get started here on our agenda, I'd just like to take a quick moment and thank yourself, Dr. Sample, and your staff, Technology Director Kesha Nashick, and everyone on her team for doing everything in their power to keep tonight's board meeting on track, both in person and virtually. So, thank you for that. And everybody for, all the board members for getting their notes and doing their best to go with the flow in this fluid time that, with all the updates that we've received, sometimes hourly, not just daily or weekly. So, thank you for bearing with us on that. I know we do have a long, hearty agenda tonight, so we will do our best to make sure everyone understands everything that's here in the boardroom and virtually. So, thanks again for bearing with us. As you'll notice, some of the modifications, and I'll try to step through them, as will Dr. Sample, as we get up to those agenda items. Tonight, we do not have any members of the public asking to speak and publicly comment to the board. And based on things going on here in our country with health concerns, we're going to postpone recognition until we can get back to that. And also for student safety, our Student Board of Education representative reports will be postponed until we can work our way back to that. Before we get into the administrative reports with Dr. Sample, I believe Kesha will take a quick moment to make sure everyone is on the same page with what we're doing with our technology and how she is going to moderate from a part of this evening for anyone on Google Hangout.
Correct. Yep, so I just wanted, again, this is kind of trial here with this being our first run. We're having a hard time hearing you with it so far back with us being able to view everybody. And I think that depending on the requirements for this meeting, it may be best if we just place the laptop in the middle of the room so that we can hear and then just make sure that we can see as many board members as possible. Because I know that when it's this far back, we're all kind of straining to hear except for when Jeremy and Brett are talking. Would that be okay if we move it forward just a little bit, get as many people in the picture as possible, but at least we can hear?
Sounds good. That adjustment will be made here momentarily, Kesha.
Okay.
Period. Correct.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's probably more important to see everything. Okay. Kevin, could you do a test sentence, did you?
Kesha, does that help any by moving you up toward the middle of the room?
That is a little bit better. Uh...
We'll try that again.
Move the laptop to the other end.
We can move the, is that any better?
The right hand is recording.
Great.
How about that?
The camera on Kevin and John? Yep.
All right.
And then we'll go over that.
Trying the test again.
I think that's going to have to be our best bet, just so that everyone can hear. Okay. Thank you. And just to remind everybody, the microphones are going to be attached to the sound system that records this audio and video for the meeting. It is not, the lights are not connected to the MacBook that, at the Google Hangout. So, speaking into the mic for the sake of the Hangout people hearing is not going to improve our sound quality. Now, we are recording this board meeting in general, further back, to record all the interactions, like we nor, just like we normally would. So, again, just kind of keep, be thoughtful of the technology that's connected. We are at the mercy of the microphone on the MacBook, so we'll focus on listening in to the board meeting. And then again, if I see someone on the virtual side that has, that has a comment or a question, they'll raise their hand on my end, and then I'll, as soon as you guys have a break in your conversations, I'll interject. They'll unmute their mic and then they'll say what they need to say. Okay. So, again, we'll just, we'll just roll with that. If there's anything need to adjust, thanks for everybody's flexibility.
All right. Thank you, Kesha. At this time on our agenda, I will turn it over to Dr. Sample for beginning of the administrative reports, please.
The first report is from Glenda Oginski. That's our AGR report, or our Achievement Gap Reduction Report. There's three ways to satisfy achievement gap reduction. One-on-one tutoring provided by a licensed teacher, as outlined in her topic summary page, instructional coaching, or maintaining 18 to 1, or 30 to 2 classroom ratios. And our model is instructional coaching. So, after the rationale, you can see each one of the AGR reports from each one of the four elementary buildings. AGR only applies to elementary buildings. If there's any questions, I know that Glenda is attending virtually, and if there's anything that you'd like to add, Glenda, please do.
No additions.
Any questions for myself or Glenda regarding the AGR report? Student Monitor Report is also informational only from Glenda Oginski. I know that many board members were able to see this. This is the, for grade level. It's grade level for literacy screening, our benchmark assessment with FastBridge. As you know, our winter FastBridge time just occurred, and so while spring FastBridge time is still up in the air, at least we've got two reports so far this year. Any questions on any of the reports for either the buildings or the overall topic summary sheet, for myself or Glenda? Coronavirus Preparedness. This is Karen Baker's topic summary sheet. Please note that this topic summary sheet was done some time ago. It's still, it links to our pandemic response plan. That's the very first thing we broke out. That is an administrative guideline, so we're able to make some revisions, and we will make revisions because a couple of the things were a little outdated. She's including the letters that we received as of this writing, and then when we get to my superintendent's report, I've got a more detailed plan as of at least two days ago, and things have changed since then. So, I'll be able to catch you up on my superintendent's report. Any questions are all for what Karen presented with her topic summary. You'll see Jill Seaman's monthly report for Pine River School for Young Learners. Same format as past months. See the total Pine River School for Young Learners enrollment, as well as 4K enrollment. Any questions for myself or Jill? Eddie's report contains quite a bit of information. He's going to have a later agenda item, too, talking about the handbook, again, FMLA, job postings, WORF, the Wisconsin Education Recruitment Fair, Benefit Education Group, and then some information regarding the COVID-19 or coronavirus-19 insurance information. Any questions for myself or Eddie's, for his report?
Go ahead, John. My question to go, is it regards to that Stop It app that's still pending? When do we anticipate implementation?
From our last cabinet meeting, I believe, Kesha, remind me if I'm incorrect, that we were, are we revising a policy before we can do that? Do we need an accompanying policy before we roll out Stop It app?
Correct. It was my understanding that there was some kind of policies and procedures that needed to be put in place to verify how we were going to leverage and then monitor that app. Since it is anonymous, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, obviously if there were reports made that the board, that we had the board's expectations for how that would then be communicated back or handled internally, and I believe that that was still getting worked out.
So, I will, John, I'll make a note, find out where we're at in that policy, because I don't recall off the top of my head right now.
Yeah, I believe we initiated that spring of last year. I think it was a board expectation that there would be an 800 number provided to all employees to be able to report unwanted behavior.
Correct.
And so, and then if the app is available for implementation, and we're just waiting on a policy, we need to get that in place.
Yep, we do. I'll find out where that policy is right now, and that shouldn't be a problem. And I just, like I said, I don't recall, so I will find out where the O is at with that and where the potential holdup is. If it's on our end, we'll get it pushed through properly. Okay. Laura's Food Participation Report for the month of February is also attached. Laura, I know, was present virtually, so if you have any questions for her or myself that I could answer. Kesha's Technology Update, wide range of topics there. This is the time for all of us for mid-year check-ins and evaluations. She's got some tech reminders and policy updates, iOS and OS updates, online attendance. Kesha, anything that you wanted to highlight here with this report?
It's all in the language.
And then for my superintendent's report, I've shared my calendar, and then some of the topics that I've highlighted recently were Brett, Laura, and I were able to attend the annual legislative meeting in Medford. The, for the first time since I've been attending, the governor also was in attendance for most of that meeting, so that was, that was a treat to have him there. I also attended the Merrill High School Art Show. That was on March 7th. Students did a fantastic job, as they always do. I think the real noticeable difference this year with this year's art show was that the students did a lot of that work as far as displaying their artworks and things, and they were also present so that the public could answer questions or ask questions of them. And then pandemic meetings. We've been meeting on a daily basis, virtually, because things are changing so quickly. So, this was, I believe this was written probably when the governor's order was to limit public gatherings of 50 or more people. We all know that that essentially changed to 10 or more, so nine is our capacity. While that's a little bit foggy on the national level, Tony Evers' order was very, very clear. It says 10 or more people. We are banned from 10 or more, so that was very clear that we have to keep it at nine. Thus, the arrangement tonight. You can see some of the dates that I've included there for each time that we've met. We have since, this is Monday, April 6th, or I'm sorry, the last meeting we had, at least by this calendar, was March 15th. And we have met every day this week, virtually, as well, as things continue to change. And I thought that I had attached, yes, for the pandemic planning meeting, you can see the link there. That takes you to the website. That website is being updated daily as information comes in. We've got just a ton of information, and then what I will do about every three days, I'll send out a video, or I'll send out a school messenger to parents encouraging them to check the website for the latest information. So, like I say, it's been extremely quick as far as the pace of information, the volume of information coming in, so we're trying to keep the parents as notified as possible. Any questions regarding any of that, specifically pandemic or what we're doing with the coronavirus orders?
Jeremy? Just out of curiosity, as I've been going through the content myself, just to release to the public, one thing I haven't seen weigh in, except for Mrs. Stanford's response to Governor Evers' order to close schools statewide, you haven't heard much from DPI regarding COVID-19 and so on. Have you had any communication personally with DPI, or is, are they still in touch with administrators?
They are. DPI sends out updates, and that's where we get a lot of our information, and so then we'll take that information and put it out to the parents, whether it be through video or anything else. Right now, it seems like the governor's office is probably more, communicating more than DPI is, and DPI is kind of in a reactionary mode as well. So, I think DPI is not designed to, of course, trump the governor's office, so they're kind of sitting and waiting like we are, and then they get out information as soon as the governor makes information aware.
So, basically, the governor makes, governor makes his decision that DPI basically assesses, how does this affect schools, if any, and then they carry that information to school administrators such as yourself, then? And then you implement whatever change you need to make with district staff?
Correct. And the difference between the governor's information and DPI's information, DPI's information is primarily for school administrators on how to operate. The governor's information, we get it out to parents right away. And then what we do is we take the DPI's information, turn it into our own, and marilize it, and then we communicate it out to parents. So, yeah, very good question. And each one of our professional, mine is lost, so each one of our professional organizations keep all of us informed, too. So, there's just, a lot of times, each professional organization will send out the same information, but it's better to get too much information than not enough. So, it's, it's been a busy time.
Lot of, lot of back and forth.
A lot.
Yeah, can imagine.
Dr. Sample, we have a question on the virtual side from Maria.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
We're good.
We're good? Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear parts of the meeting at the beginning, so I apologize. I just enlisted Kesha's help to get me heard. Just a quick question with regard to the coronavirus and the planning. I know there's tons done with regard to planning, but one thing that I'm wondering about, just because of the situation I'm in and because I have a lot of contact with the seniors at the high school, there's a ton of concern regarding prom, awards night, graduation. Have any decisions been made about that? I don't know if it's too early to do that, but I'm wondering what the thought process is or what the plan is.
My plan is to create a video, post that online, let, through school messenger, all that parents know what my video is. I'm not going to say any dates, but I will say that what we are hearing is that the April 6th return to school is probably not realistic, and that this will be extended for some time.
Right.
So, that's, that's what I'm going to say without breaking too many hearts unless I really have to about the prom and about graduation. Right now, the topic coming out of WIAA is that spring sports are likely to be canceled, but we don't know that for certain yet. As soon as we do find out, I want to, I want to let our parents and our students know right away.
Right. I just think it would be nice to try communication to those kids that are affected in this senior year that perhaps were on it and are making plans for it, you know? I understand from seeing what I've seen and talking to the people I've talked to, that it would be nice to have communication to at least know that the district understands the angst and anxiety happening with many of them at this point.
Yes, absolutely, and that will be a part of my video. I appreciate that perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, and as a reminder, just to the physical board present, if you could continue to talk in that same volume that John was just talking, for those of you further away from the MacBook, that is great.
All right. Thanks, Kesha. Another question here in the boardroom from Jeremy?
Yeah, one more question on the sports note, and I'd like Maria, Matt did this earlier, Maria brought it up, I almost forgot. So, as we all know by now what happened with the WIAA state tournament and so on, and now, John, as you stated there, considering canceling spring sports. So, in the event that happens, and say, you know, knock on wood, this clears up within, you know, hopefully a month, month and a half, would it be an option, and I just know this has been done in the past, not quite to this level, would the district organizing intramural sporting events for kids to participate in, such as, I don't know, I know you could really do it with track or so on, but maybe softball, baseball, soccer? Just getting something, something for athletics?
We could, we could. That's about the answer I have right now. I know that if we are able to reconvene, we've got a lot of catching up to do academically, and of course, the social, emotional side of things, too. So, that's kind of the flavor of my next video, is to at least provide as much peace of mind as we possibly can, but no, that's not, certainly not outside the realm of our, of what we can do.
And John Cannon has a few added details as well.
Great, go ahead, Shannon.
I'll just chime in that, so we've been in contact with the principals around the valley and kind of Maria's question and Jeremy's. A lot of this will be determined by how much is left greater than us. I mean, it'd be kind of heated, so what we can do, the plan on the problem would be to push it back, push it back, push it back, probably till we run out of school year. And then graduation is like, the whole concept of what that would look like is so alien to everybody in valley and probably the world for that matter, that we've got a lot of thinking to do on that, as John kind of will do. The challenge with the intramurals is that we can't have any number of people congregating in any year. So, the dugout made it clear that you can't even have, you know, practices off-site or any of that kind of things, and everybody's discouraged, you can travel and keep and hey, you, and so intramural would be kind of contrary to that spirit.
I guess to clarify, Shannon, what I was getting at is, once these restrictions have been lifted, once the, whatever you want to call this that we're going through right now, once it's over with, and if, say, if WIAA cancels spring sports, we get through this, we have at least a decent amount of time left in the school year. For those athletes who couldn't pitch, pay in the sanctioned sporting events for the WIAA, if there'd be an option to do intramural, I'm not sure how you pronounce that word, intramural events here within the district or even with other schools in the valley?
Yeah, that's possible. It's worth a discussion. I mean, a lot of that, of course, would depend on like how much school year is left and those kind of things, but I think any of those ideas certainly are worth merit if we are able to come back at any point in time.
Thank you, Shannon. Glenda has a question here in the boardroom also.
Well, I guess just kind of a comment, but I mean, it's going to be awful hard to do some of those things because you also got the Little League stuff that happens when school is out, but that is also being postponed as well. And so, right now, I think all spring, summer events are, we don't know, it's kind of like the unknown of when anything is actually going to start back up again. So, the, you know, having the kids come back in for the intramural items or competing at a certain date might be also hard because we have Merrill Bay, Little League, all those things we'll be using if that comes, I mean, if we get to.
Sure.
But that's another thing to think about, too.
But I think, and to your point, Glenda, we don't know when the return.
Right, exactly.
For education is going to be, so to talk about extra or co-curricular events, athletics, prom, those are all important to seniors and any student. However, we need to focus on when it's, when we're going to get the all-clear for students and staff to safely be able to come back into the buildings. Focus initially has been on that, and a lot of our agenda will be tied to policies to understand what it means in the meantime. And so, while we all have a lot of questions, and these are great thoughts, we can certainly share those, but I think our focus this evening is going to be on what the knowns are, which is the situation as of today, as Dr. Sample has explained, the number of people that can get together in a group, and that we're working on an April 6th date or deadline that looks like it will be extended. So, at this point, unless we had additional questions, on the superintendent's report, I would go to the next part of our agenda. Do we have any other questions on that? Seeing in the boardroom or virtually, I'm going to go to the next item, which are our committee reports. The first committee report that we're going to go through would be the Finance, HR Committee. We have draft minutes from the February 26th committee meeting. John Smith, our chair, is here available for questions, as well as other committee members. Do we have any questions for Finance, HR Committee this evening? Kristi?
I have a question for John. I see that there's the, there's a talk of the, not continuing the HSA employee benefit. How much is it? How much does each employee get?
John, I'm going to interject. Could you repeat that question for us? We're having a hard time hearing the board members on the left-hand side of the front or left, so it would be your right side of the room. Could you repeat that question, please?
Sure. I was asking John what the contribution for HSA was that they were discussing. How much is it per employee?
Did you get that? The question?
The contribution per employee, Eddie or Brian? Dale, go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Brian, go ahead. Brian first.
The contribution right now is 600 for a single, for somebody on a single plane, and 1,200 for someone on a family plane.
I think the total amount, if I remember from our discussions, was somewhere in $290,000.
Yeah, it varies from year to year, but yeah, roughly 250 to 300. I think this year it's like 296 is the total contribution for all the employees that are eligible this year.
So, I think the discussion that we had centered more on the gross total of whether or not there was room inside the budget for a $297,000 item. And so, the discussion migrated to the fact that there wasn't. So, it didn't require any action, it would only require action to continue, and so the committee at that point decided to take no action.
And I believe Eddie had something to add.
Yes, we got a renewal, or we had some renewal discussion the other day, and I actually got an email and had some discussion at a, not a scheduled meeting, but nevertheless resulted in some discussion on our renewal rate for next year coming back at five and a half percent. And we're actually looking to see if we can try and get it a little lower, depending on some of the circumstances and a couple other concerns the staff had, but I'm thinking we're definitely going to be less than the projected nine that was in the original budget. I don't know if Brian knows up top of his head or wants to comment on the difference between a five or five and a half percent renewal and nine, but either way, I think we were talking about it at the committee meeting next month, just to at least review what the renewal rate was.
Brian, any other thoughts?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what a, what the difference between a five and a half and a nine would be. Probably about 100, 250,000 if I had to guess, being as well 3% of the total, so 3 and 3 and a half.
Did we answer all the questions? Did we answer all the questions that we, that came from the board?
We did.
Yes.
Okay.
John, did you have anything to add to Kristi's question? I know Brian had answered it, as did Eddie.
No, I, I'm only answering the question of the HSA, which is what we discussed and
Correct.
That's what, basically, the entirety of the discussion centered on was $290,000 line item, but basically, we did have a comparative discussion on other line items, such as cost of operating Maple Grove. The third item was, basically, we were bad, we were at a point where in order to fund one thing, we'd be shifting cost savings, called the, the curriculum amounts. So, there was $200,000 that, or was being earmarked for the new reading curriculum, and so, by moving forward and adding the HSA, we'd be adding $300,000 to the budget, and then, $200,000 for curriculum, and then, if we move towards closing Maple Grove, we end up actually doing nothing to the budget, and it's a net zero sum of a lot of moving of parts, but we didn't gain anything, so. That's how we came to the conclusion that there wasn't a $300,000, we could move in the budget to consider moving it forward for another year.
Thank you.
Can you clarify for, for the board also why no action was needed if nothing was going to be done? Maybe not everybody had studied up on that or had remembered that?
Yeah, so when we adopted the HSA for the last two years, we approved it for a two-year period, almost like a budget biennium thought process. But we didn't, I guess it was two years, and it was a two-year to help insulate the increase in premiums that we were going to expect the employees to take on, so. The increase went from four percent to 12 percent and
So, it was a four eight twelve?
Four eight twelve.
Right.
Four eight twelve, and, and so, we put the HSA in place to help buffer that increase, but it was meant to be a transitionary thing, and so, we basically just allowed the motion to exhaust itself, and so, we did. It's not one of those things that anyone's required to, I guess, redo.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the Finance HR Committee? Hearing none. Our next committee report was from the Facilities Committee. We have draft minutes provided for the March 4th committee meeting. Myself as chair and other members of that committee are available for questions. Anyone have questions for the Facilities Committee? Hearing none. Our next committee on the agenda is the Policy Committee. We also had the draft minutes from the March 9th committee meeting. Paul Prue as chair and the rest of the committee is also available for questions. They had quite a busy evening that night. Anyone have questions for the Policy Committee at this time? Hearing none. The next committee would be the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, or CTP. The draft minutes were included from the March 11th committee meeting. Maria Volpe is available virtually, and other members of the committee are available here for any questions. Do we have any questions for the CTP Committee this evening? All right, thank you. Hearing none. Wanted to thank everybody again for all their work on the committees, and keep up the good work there, and we'll continue to move forward. Our next item on our agenda was unfinished business. We officially have none in that part of the agenda, and we will then move on to Board of Education business. The first item there is consideration of payment for staff in the event of a district closure for health-related reasons, with an attached topic summary sheet from our HR Director, Eddie Ben. Dr. Sample, would you like to summarize anything there?
We didn't want to bring an issue to the board without a recommendation, knowing that you guys can, of course, you know, make any decision that, that you, that you wish to. But there's a lot of information in here. Eddie can address it. The difficult part is, it's hard to take all of our staff and say, okay, this applies to everybody. We've got, as you can imagine, we've got lifeguards that work, the pool, pool's closed, they're not working, they're not getting paid. So, there's a lot of considerations with this. Uh, I think our biggest, our, I know our largest group is instructional aides. What we typically do in a weather-related closure, and that's for a day, maybe two, maybe three, if it was last winter, is our aides are tied to our students, and so, it was very, very easy for that part. While our teachers continue to make salary, if our students aren't here, our aides aren't here, our aides don't get paid. This is unprecedented, and so, that's why we're coming to the board to see what we can do. Eddie, I know that you've got a lot more information as well. If you want to provide more of a summary of, as, as far as what you've got in your topic summary, I think that would be very helpful as well.
Go ahead, Eddie.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
We can, but we can only see Dale, so.
That's all right.
It's a venture.
Yeah, Eddie and I are just sitting across the parking lots.
No, I got you.
So, a couple of things. Yeah, there's a lot of information there. When this first happened, I definitely reached out, kind of looked to see what other schools were doing, had some ideas over home, we talked about it in the cabinet. And just, I, I think at the end of the day, you can, you can look at a lot of different things, schools are doing. I went to the Losbo webpage, and just to give you an example, there's kind of a state-level Google sheet, almost, that schools are contributing to, and right now, there's eighty-two schools who posted on it what they're doing. Uh, and just to give you an idea, about forty-three percent of them are, are not paying some of these support staff roles, like aides in particular, and about fifty-six percent of them are. And so, it's an interesting split. Uh, some schools are going above and beyond, and they're paying people who are off their regular wage, and they're offering some form of what you might call hazard pay to folks like custodians or, or payroll people who have come in to schools where uh, they might have a compromised environment, whether a student was diagnosed or whatever, and they're paying them extra. So, really, you've got a lot of latitude. Uh, if you go to the bottom, like Dr. Sample mentioned, we posted a recommendation down there in the hopes that that was kind of the minimum that the board was willing to do. If you said, well, you know, what are other districts doing? I know DC Everest is paying a full amount to all their staff. Los has not been very upfront about it, and so, I don't know what Los is doing. But there's a number of districts who kind of follow the suit from DC Everest, and so, I'm not opposed to that. Brian had a conversation with me as well about budget impact, and I posted some of that information into the topic summary sheet. One of the interesting things about it is having some conversation around the snow day business, and whether or not you end up making days up later or not, and all those kind of things. We did not know that DPI was going to give instructional minute waivers at the time this is written. So, if they do that, then you have a lot less risk with regard to saying, well, if we pay them and then we got to make up days, this could cost us a fortune. I don't know that that's going to be the case if they're not holding schools accountable for the minutes. But again, that recommendation was kind of a minimum threshold of where we hoped to go, and at this point, rather than talk about it top to bottom, I would be looking to entertain any questions you guys have.
The only other bit of information, Eddie, that I'll add, and this is very new information, things are always changing, is we had information from Head Start that was suggesting that we continue to pay through the federal grant those aides as they work. That prompted some more research by us. Eddie, you spoke to the people from the Chicago office, and that was more of a, of a suggestion, even though on their website, it says that they are directing Head Starts to continue to pay their, their support staff during the closures, correct?
Yes, the, I called the Chicago office today myself, had a conversation with Miguel, who is our assigned representative, um, and again, she, she basically said that they put that guidance out so that they could empower those agencies to pay those payments, um, and then not kind of tie their hands or anything. One of the issues that I brought up, if you look at the recommendation we made, part of the reason we did what we did was because custodians and some other folks, but particularly custodians, are coming in to the buildings and they're getting their regular wage. The, the aides are not able to, because they don't have students here that they can serve per se, and so, we wanted to some, somewhat justify the differences that ones expected to come and work. And somewhat of a risky situation, and one is allowed to stay at home and still collect that pay. The aide piece with, with Prizzle essentially, when they made that recommendation also, they're saying pay all the staff, but that's also assuming that it is a 100% federally funded program, and the handful of school-based Head Start programs have a local share and a federal share. So, when they say pay 100% for us, it's not all federal dollars. It's part local tax dollars and it's part federal dollars, and so, I'm hoping that whatever we do tonight, we can be consistent across the buildings. And so, if we decide we're going to pay everybody at 100%, uh, great, then we'll do that across the board. I, I would not like to see us in a situation where, for example, the aides at Prizzle get 100% and the rest of the aides in the district get something different. They all do the same work. They're all valuable. We, we care about all of them regardless of which building they're in, and that was why I called to get that clarification today.
Okay, we have a question for Maria.
Go ahead, Maria, then John Smith next.
Okay, unmute, and then you can go ahead.
Just a quick one.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just to clarify, uh, Eddie, you had said, half a minute? You had said if they waived them, I thought it waiving.
Maria, were you cutting out slightly? Could you say that again?
Eddie had mentioned the instructional minutes, and then
What were I?
Got a lot to go, Eddie.
Maria, I hope you can hear me, but I
Maria?
I, I think the answer to your question is, from what I'm seeing, that we're passing around emails today and things, it looks like they're going to be considering waivers. Can, John, can you confirm that?
That's correct. That's the most recent information coming out of DPI. Like I say, it's, things are happening so fast, even at the time that we posted this agenda, some of our topic summary information is, is, is old now, so. I'm, I'm glad that we're able to meet this way because that is the information coming out of DPI. In the past, they would say, yeah, you can, you can write a waiver and have us excuse your menace, but we're going to deny it, but go ahead and write the waiver. Now, that language has changed altogether, saying that they are going to be accepting waivers, they are going to be, in, in light of this unprecedented event, not holding us accountable for instructional minutes, so I'm glad we've got it on the virtual. I do not anticipate any makeup days. I don't anticipate us going for, to school deep into the summer, because right now, we're doing virtual learning. That does count for instructional minutes, and even if it didn't count as instructional minutes, that's going to be waived. The only other thing, shoot, that I was going to mention was the other allowance that came out of DPI today too, and I'll, it'll come back to me, I hope.
Okay, let's just pause there for a quick second. Maria, did that answer your question?
Is it ready for her to download to Cisco so she can
Yeah.
Yes.
Kesha, I'm just going to, I'm just going to call Maria and place her on my iPhone, because we're, we're basically doing a teleconference with her anyways.
Correct. Maria, do you want John Smith to give you a call to teleconference you in? The problem with that, John, is that the hangouts people don't have a problem hearing her.
Can I put my phone right by the speaker?
You can do that. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Hey.
Hey, you're, you're live.
Yeah, I'm here, thank you.
Can you hear that?
A little stucky on our end, but we'll make it.
Thank you.
There's a speaker on this one. All right, give her task out, Maria.
Can you hear me halfway? Yes.
Good man.
Perfect.
Acknowledged.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yep.
But could you hear us, Maria?
Perfectly.
Excellent.
Thank you.
The question I had for Brian was, in regards to budget impact, if I'm wrapping my head around this correctly, we will get paid from the state, federal, and local, the same amount we would if we would be going to school. So, there's really no impact to the budget. It's not like we're running a shoe factory, we're not making shoes, nobody's buying shoes, and so, we don't have any money. We don't have the money to fully fund payroll, no matter the decisions we make. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I haven't heard anything to the contrary that aid would be reduced or anything like that at this point, and we've received almost all of our pre-credit tax revenue as well this year, so. There shouldn't be, by just continuing payroll as is, and then, if we don't, as long as we don't start now, the aids to the end of the year, there shouldn't be any budget impact to just simply continuing payroll as is, or, or are you continuing with the plan that is like out?
Good. I guess one of the things I, I would like to propose, since I still have the floor, is to just pay everybody. That would be as far as a, if we're making a decision, and I was asked my opinion, that's what I would do, because when this does resolve itself, I want to make sure we have staff that are not suffering. And so, one, I think it's a, it's a thing we can do for our staff, and two, it's the best thing that we can do so that when they do return to work, they haven't had to endure financial damage between then, which will make for a difficult transition.
Is that in the form of a motion, or will you make that a motion?
I'll make that in form of a motion.
Um, I believe Eddie and Dale have a comment.
And we will, we will go into that. We have a motion and a second, and I'll make sure that's documented. I did have a hand that you couldn't see there too, Kesha, so.
Thank you.
We're noting a motion by John Smith, a second by Paul Prue. I'm going to get to Jeremy's question on the motion, and then we will turn it over to any virtual hands that have been raised also. So, Jeremy, your question on the motion?
Yep, two-part question. So, we're, just to clarify, I understand what I'm voting on, is we are voting on to continue to pay, complete pay staff up to this point, correct?
Which staff?
The staff, the support staff, we're talking about for the students. They've been paid to date?
They, uh, Brian and Eddie, our support staff have not missed any paychecks to date, correct?
No, we've not. Um, I, I do want to clarify, where you guys get too far ahead of us, though, there's, I want to get some clarity on different employee groups, because the ones who are listed in that sheet are the main regular staff, but there's some other areas I want to touch base on too when you're ready.
So, we're going to, what we're voting on with your motion, the second, is to continue to pay staff as, as if we are still in session, correct?
That's my motion.
Okay. I would support that 100%. I think anything short of that, not only would we be bringing financial hardship upon our staff, but when we do reopen in four, five, six weeks, what have you, I want to make sure we have staff that are going to be in attendance when we reopen. Not having staff, you know, sorry, found a different job, you weren't paying me, so I had to do what I had to do for my family. So, keep them happy, keep them supported, but make sure we have our staff back when, and hit the ground running when we're ready to do so.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'm going to go virtually to Eddie, and then I have Kristi's hand raised locally as well. Go ahead, Eddie.
Okay, so then, then Eddie, I want to get clarification on when we say we want to pay everybody. That's great. Um, I've got some areas that are not on a regular schedule to pay, so here are some of the examples. Uh, student workers, for example, I've got substitutes, I've got an aquatics slash after-school director, part-time type of position. Um, we've got lifeguards, and then other after-school programs, and then you've got athletics. We've got lifeguards and then other after-school programs, and then you've got athletics. I've got a little bit different take on some of those. Some of them are just flat out hard to pay. For example, a substitute, they get booked when they get booked, so it's not as easy to say, yeah, just pay them like normal. Because some weeks they might work one day, some days, or some weeks they might work five. And that gets to be a little difficult. And Brian and I had some conversation earlier today. Some of those groups we would probably not recommend paying, not that you can't, but that would be our suggestion. For example, like student workers. Substitutes, we probably wouldn't recommend. Cool lifeguards. The after-school program is like an add-on for two hours a day, for example. I don't know where you guys are at on some of those items. And then the athletic pace for all the spring sports. For the most part, none of the spring sports have really started. And so they're all set to be paid. But with a huge question mark as to whether or not we'll be coming back, or if there will be a season or any of that. I didn't know exactly how we wanted to handle that. If you want to have some discussion, I'd like to get a motion that includes what to do or not to do with those types of situations.
My question, if I can offer an amendment to John's motion?
Christie's waiting to speak, possibly Dale, and he was asked a question. So I want to ask the question of the motioning party, which is Mr. Smith, if there's anything that he wanted to clarify in that motion, or if we're going to turn it to more questions and then turn that over at the end. And we, for clarifying purposes, I understood one thing, but he's asking...
I would like to amend my motion to read the payment of wages and benefits to, at the current levels, to full-time employees, full-time regularly scheduled employees of the district.
And to discuss maybe coach salaries later.
I have no desire to discuss coach salaries on this issue personally at all, but...
We have a comment from Brian.
What? I'll second it. We have amended motion.
Part-time, John.
What's that?
Do you have some part-time regularly scheduled employees that do work? Not many, but we do have some.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
Regular scheduled programs, kind of either key.
John, Maria, do you want to hear Brian's comments?
Yeah, and I think we're making this point more difficult than it needs to be. My motion is, is that we pay the regularly scheduled employees, full-time or part-time, without interruption. And not people that are irregularly scheduled or stipend.
We have that amended motion by Mr. Smith, and Mr. Prue has offered that second to stand. Christie had a question before we go back to Brian or anyone virtually, so...
I had a question on the aides. So if we're going to pay the aides, would they be available to the teachers if the teachers need them?
With this, man?
Yes.
With this motion, it provides us with more flexibility because there are things that they can be helping with virtually. And so that would, and I'm sure that they're wanting to as well. It's not anything that they did that caused them to be at home. And so we would be able to access them and not put them in harm's way, but access them just like we are with our teachers and administrators, correct?
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Brian, did you have some discussion or question to add? Or I believe that was all handled?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, thank you, Brian. Any additional questions or discussions on the amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Two separate. And then go back to the motion. So now that the amendment has passed, the motion, also by Mr. Smith and Mr. Prue, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay.
Before we move on any further, was...
And any abstentions, we're in the middle of a vote.
Oh, sorry, I thought we were done.
We were clarifying on the motion, but thank you. Did you have something on this next topic, or...
No, I had something I wanted to discuss, ask tonight, but this is the only agenda item that would be appropriate to ask it. So I just wanted to ask Brian a question before we move any further.
Brian, can you hear Board Member Ratliff?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Brian, I know this is brand new, but like John said, this is very fluid, so things are changing hourly. So I just want to throw this out there and make the board aware then, see if you've been made aware and what you foresee happening with this. Phase two of the coronavirus bill was passed today by the Senate, 90 to 8. Provision of that bill is to pay full and part-time employees for paid leave for 12 weeks if they have children who are out of school as part of the COVID-19 natural emergency. So my first question, being a board member, of course, is if we have staff who are home with their children because their children are at school, and in turn we have to pay them 12 weeks paid leave, and up to 67% of their full-time wages, I believe, is what the bill reads. Have you received any information on this? Do you have any idea how this may impact our budget, if at all?
I just saw today that that was passed. I haven't, I haven't looked into it at all. I don't know the details of it, so I can't really say one way or the other.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian. Jeremy, Nups had his hand up as well.
Can I also, this would be in the same category.
Go ahead, Nups.
Just, they're also talking about giving families like $1,000 to cover expenses.
Any part of phase three.
So if we're paying these people to be home, which I agree with, but now if they get $1,000 or $2,000, like they're talking maybe two payments, so they're actually going to make money by being off, you know?
That's out of our hands now as our employer.
Okay. Because I'm understanding that one, even whether you're working or you're not working, you're still going to get it, so.
Because all these other tax returns in 2018, you're going to be eligible for it.
Okay, all right.
We have a comment from Eddie.
Things are changing.
Eddie, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had one clarification question. I couldn't quite hear before when you guys were voting. The original motion talked about this concept of whether or not you want this to, this authority for us to do this to extend the end of this school year or not. And I would ask because, just as an example, if we, they clearly come back to school and then this happens again and they teleport and they go home, do you want us to continue on that path? Or would you want to reevaluate this decision each time the date for closure gets extended? So I guess ultimately I want to know how long do we have authority to do this?
Go ahead, John.
The intent of my motion was, is you have the authority to do it till the end of the school year or to when you would normally stop paying a person to work.
Okay.
We'll make that clear.
It would be as hard as for everybody else.
Did anyone not understand that within the motion? And everyone, otherwise we will amend that and go back through the parliamentary procedure. I'm not seeing anyone concerned by that, Eddie. So the clerk and the recorder will make the note that was the intent and the understanding of the motion to go through the end of the school year if needed and then reevaluate it and brought back up at that time.
Thank you.
The next item in the regular Board of Education Business section of our agenda this evening is proposal for continuing meal service during pandemic closure with a attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher and Laura Kraus's Astro from Tarter. We do have a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening, Paul?
Recommend the motion to continue offering meal service beginning on March 30th through the end of the closure on April 6th or beyond if the state mandated COVID-19 closure is extended.
I'll second.
Motion by Paul, second by Brett. Is there any discussion on the motion or this topic? We do have...
Eddie has a quick question.
Yep.
Maria has a question and Brian has a comment. Maria, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, if the other districts were providing meal service, or at least had some sort of a, oh, I don't know, organizing effort to provide meals during the season, even after during spring break? I don't know that we were thinking, or excuse me, thinking about that. But would they have any plans to do that at this point, or is it just after spring break?
And I believe Brian, Brian was going to comment on that exact thing, so I'll let him take the floor.
Thank you.
So originally, when we wrote this, at the time we wrote this, DPI was not going to allow reimbursements during our regularly scheduled spring break. An hour before the meeting, they released new guidance saying that was not the case and that we can serve meals and get reimbursements starting immediately. So I think we can be up and running by April 30th, or I'm sorry, by Monday. I think any sooner than that, I'd have to defer to Laura on that, but we need some time to get up and running with the logistics. But we did have a conversation earlier today anticipating this, and she's Monday for sure. And then what would happen is, is we would distribute the meals at the high school. We did get word from Lincoln County Health Department. We had debated at one point of delivering meals to parents who couldn't come and get them. The Lincoln County Health Department is advising against that. They want us to have them come pick them up instead of us delivering them. So we could, preferably, be ready to deal by Monday with offering meals at the earliest. And I'd defer to Laura, we could be up and running. I know, like tomorrow would be too early, and I don't know what Friday, I think Friday would probably be a little early.
I have not seen any hand raising from Laura.
The Monday, I would say, would be the earliest because the truck doesn't even come in until Friday.
Thank you, Laura.
Can I get my non-process statement, could you do it, let's do it.
Understood, Maria. Thank you. Brian or Laura, one of the clarifying questions that I had, I understand that they did not want district personnel for delivery. What if a third party volunteered to do so? If it was members of the community or local organizations tied to that? Otherwise, are people allowing pickup for multiple families? To say if Family A was eligible with two students to pick up two meal supplements, but their neighbor did not have transportation or was at work, and they had three kids, could they get five of these meal packages through the program? How would, talk me through that, Brian or Laura, please?
I defer to Laura on that one.
Okay, Brian. Laura?
Yes, they can pick up as many meals as they can. So if somebody from New Riverwood has friends around them, the actual students do not have to be in the car. They do not want anybody going to people's houses and doing it like that. They would rather have, you know, somebody come, they can pick up five meals. What I'm going to do is I'm going to package up a breakfast and a lunch in each bag. So they're going to have a breakfast and a lunch. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. At one point, there was some discussion of multiple days? Being packed into a bag or being picked up at one time versus daily to make it easier on parents? Is that being considered, or are you doing this day by day?
We are doing this on Monday. We will have meals ready for Tuesday and Tuesday. And then again on Wednesday, they can come and pick up a meal for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So we'll have two days that they'll be picking up the meals. I don't think that we should do it every day because it kind of faces the purpose of staying away from each other.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that through the information provided. Thanks, Laura. We have a question here locally by Board Member Smith. John, go ahead.
This is for Laura also. I'm just going to throw out a realistic scenario that there will be members of the churches that would look forward to the opportunity of picking up these meals. So from your interpretation, it doesn't matter if a few zealous people around the community wanted to deliver them, it's just recommended that we don't, right?
Well, the Lincoln County said not to have us deliver them. I don't see a problem with people picking up meals for each other if that helps the situation. I also wanted to mention, we are going to put in the sack lunches and milk, kind of reminding them to come back on Wednesday to pick up the remaining meals.
Okay, so if we did...
I think, I'm going to jump in here. Let's, let's get, I think Laura and I should get some clarification on that because I think what you're implying is, is that there could potentially be, for example, a church come and want to pick up 100 meals and then distribute them out through the community. Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a feel out there right now of people wanting to help. And if help means they can drive in and grab some kids' meals and drop them off, there'll be people chopping up the bit for that. So I just want to know, if a neighbor can come and pick up five, can a pastor come and pick up 70? Correct, that's the question.
Okay. Let us, we'll contact both the Health Department and the DPI and just clear that and make sure that that is okay due from both organizations. And if so, then we'll make arrangements to do that.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Future clarification.
Eddie, can I add something to that?
Go ahead, Maria.
I understand that there are other districts who are just, I mean, pick up times, like during school. And I, I, I just wonder how many people, I, I'm sorry, I just think some of this on the social media on the internet, how many people can't pick up, I would think that more than can. So I just hope that we're providing as much research as we can for these folk that need food and to have a pickup point at any point in time or whatever we decide the schedule would be, rather than worrying about who's picking up or whatnot. I guess they just wanted it to be shared.
Sure.
You can comment.
So, yeah, we'll do some research on that. You know, the things we could do, you know, right now, we were only looking at a pickup point at the high school. It's, you know, we could discuss expanding that. You know, we're trying to balance the need to get food out with also, while also balancing against exposing too many people or getting too many people in the buildings. So we will, we'll do some more research on that in DPI and our department, see what we can do with what facilities they suggest and to what extent we can do without compromising the restrictions that the governor has placed on gatherings and stuff like that.
Brian, did anyone want to issue a comment you wanted to add?
Did I let?
Yeah.
Sorry, Brian, Brian, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, this is one of the topics that have been brought up with staff today because they're hearing it from parents. They have a few of our parents that are on the free or reduced, just wondering if there's communication because it hasn't come out. So I guess the sooner we can get anything, information out to our entire group, assuming as a timeline, as the possibility of getting food. That was something that I guess the teachers were mentioning to me today through email, and I had one family via email today as well. So just want to say that.
Can I have a response to that? Go ahead, Dr. Sample.
Laura, with your permission, then if you're still planning on getting that survey out, and it's not so much a survey regarding pickup and drop-off, we'll figure that out later, but it's more of a survey so that you can have a count so that you don't run out of food or you don't have way too much. If you want to get that survey out, I can include that in my message to parents, and I'll go through school messenger and I'll encourage them to, so I wanted to highlight what happens at the board meeting anyways, and I can encourage them to take that survey. So if you're still gonna do that, just let me know.
Well, the reason why we haven't done anything till now is because we were waiting for the board decision. So that is why there has not been a survey or anything else for the community because we needed to know what to tell them.
Right, but you still want that survey to go out tomorrow then with the approval of this, correct?
No, we're gonna actually forego that survey in the interest of the time.
Okay.
You know, we're looking at what other schools are doing, and I think if we want to get up and running by Monday, we need to get going right away and not mess around with the survey. That'll delay things.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, and I believe Jill had a question or under comment.
All right, hang on a second there, Kesha. I do have a local. I had Jeremy on next, and then we'll go to Jill. So bear with me. Jeremy, go ahead, please.
I love the idea of this. It's an amazing idea, but I kind of piggyback on what Brian said. You know, while it's an amazing idea to create something like this, we can make it happen. I mean, just, it doesn't get much more wonderful than that. But at the same time, you have to be on the side of caution, remember why, where in the position that we are in the first place? Why schools are closed? Why restrictions are in place? And that is to prevent the spread or the worsening of the issue with COVID-19. So just to take a planning process, just to see the impact of everybody's minds tonight, I would like to focus on coordinating in addition to collection of meals and distribution of these meals according to drop-off point. Rather than having any more person-to-person contact than necessary, have a drop-off point where these food are dropped off at point A. It's announced by district, local media, you know, meals are now available. And have people physically come to the drop-off point, pick up their meals, and go home, and minimize as much person-to-person contact as possible. You know, versus saying, I pick up the meals, drop off from point A, and I deliver them to five, 10 people who I've been asked to deliver them to, to the residences. Eliminate that and just have the person in need come to the drop-off point, get what they need, and they can go back home.
Okay. And I think all those logistics are being worked out by Brian, Laura, Dr. Sample, and a lot of that following DPI's guidance. Anything else, Jeremy? Otherwise, I have Jill's hand raised.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. Kesha, if we can turn it over to Jill then?
All right. I just wanted to commend you on moving that up to a sooner date. We have been notified by families that are really going through some hardships currently at this time. So I'm really glad to hear that. I also want to share that there are going to be, there are, believe it or not, one of the things Head Start provides is diapers, and that's another thing that some of the families are having a hard time getting their hands on. So Head Start funds have purchased diapers. I'd like to coordinate that in effort so that we can save some trips. So I'll be talking with Laura to set that up so that those can also be distributed as essential items for the families that we serve. All right? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jill.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Maria.
I just thought of one with Jill's case with the families in need. I'm sure that most of you are aware, but there's an organization in Merrill that has already collected food. And if folks are in urgent needs, I, you're probably aware of Facebook Justin Obitski. I'm not sure what church or organization he's affiliated with, but has collected already food for families in need. So if any of the administrators or administrations have questions from families that need something, that's a place to go at this point in time, at least until we can get the money on Monday.
What church is that?
St. Stewarts.
No, Otz Garage.
My mentor, if you'll go on, is from-
Downtown Mission.
Downtown Mission Church.
He's on Facebook. He's been homestayed the last several days, and he's got, like, shirt packages for families, so.
Just to clarify, Jill, it's Pastor Justin Obitski. He's associated with Otz Garage across from the old Ford News Building downtown by the Cosmo. And he's also associated with Downtown Mission Church.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Maria, were you done stalking?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have a question or?
No, I just wanted to make sure I heard what she had to say because I didn't catch all of her conversation.
May I?
Yep.
While we're on the topic, may I? At this time too, you know, with this event and being such a disruption to our families, I don't mind which affiliation you have, but we are putting information out there. We were trying to find the Facebook page from Justin. I've been in contact with him. We'll get it out there. I've also got the information out that American is doing some things too. I said it in my email before, this shows strengths and weaknesses and challenges, and so a lot of people are stepping forward. We're busy getting that information out too. We still follow our process. We're not gonna advertise for a business, but at these times when we've got available resources that our families need, we're trying to be line it right to them.
Go ahead, Kristi.
And also food for kids they send home on the weekends. So I'm assuming you guys are working with them too?
I was just looking at the email from the Foods for Kids coordinators from Bethany. Yes.
And just another quick question. So is it just like the families that have the reduced lunch that we're gonna be looking at?
All families.
Okay. Because I didn't know, like, we have all these restaurants and bars closing now, so there would be more added to probably that.
Absolutely. And we follow it under the summer school plan, and summer school doesn't go free and reduced. It's everybody, and so that really clarifies it for us. And getting that recent information a couple of hours ago that says that we can be reimbursed for meals during spring break, I think it's a great direction to go.
So, and I know it sounds silly, but just to clarify, based on the information provided, that the only cap there would be that of enrollment?
That's correct. We won't exceed our enrollment.
So we would be passing along all of the opportunities such as Downtown Mission Church and other food pantry-type organizations along. The most Laura will be planning on making is enough for all of our students for every day of the normal work week, Monday through Friday, with two days to be picked up at one location at this time unless more news comes out. Any other clarifying questions on the motion? Otherwise, we have-
Jill, I am-
Maybe go ahead and tell what you'll do.
The motion says dirty March period, so I don't know if somebody wants to amend that. Thank you, Maria.
We have Paul or Brett. Do we want a friendly motion on this? Move to amend the motion. What is Monday's date?
23rd.
23rd. Amended motion to indicate starting on 23rd, March 2020.
Second.
We have amended motion by Paul, second by Brett. Dale have some discussion on that, or can we vote on the amended motion?
I was just gonna verify the dates.
Okay. Thank you. Given amended motion, all those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Amended motion carries. Original motion, all those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2020 Summer School Academy Program Course Description Book. And we have a recommended motion from the CTP, Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
A recommended motion to approve the schedules, course offerings, and registration materials for MAPS Summer School in Richmond 2020.
Motion by John. Do I have a second? Second by Kristi. Do we have any discussion on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the E-Rate Teach Project Approvals. The topic summary sheet provided by Kesha Mashick, and a recommended motion from the CTP Committee. Do I have a motion this evening? Paul? Move to approve the wireless upgrades to Heartland Business Systems Equipment and Professional Services not to exceed $40,000. A motion by Paul. We have a second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on that motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is that of the varsity JV Boys Basketball Trip to Winona State University in Minnesota with the topic summary sheet from John Miller and a recommended motion from the CTP Committee. For those of you not in this room or listening or watching on video, please note that this is not a short-term plan. This is to do some fundraising and not to be held for this trip until over the winter break of 2020, going into the 2021 semester. With that, do we have a recommended, we have a recommended motion? Do I have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the Merrill High School Boys Basketball Trip to Minnesota over the winter break of 2021.
2020 to 2021. Okay, do you have a second?
No second.
A second by Linda. Any discussion or clarifying questions on that motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the consideration including action regarding the 2020, 2021 school year educational programs, staffing, including but not limited to physical education, Spanish, family, consumer science, and band, with an attached topic summary sheet co-authored by Ryan Martinovich and Shannon Murray. The recommended motion from the CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
A recommended motion to approve Scenario 1, to add a reading specialist at MHS and an instructional coach at PRMS.
A motion by John. Do I have a second this evening?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion on this topic? Any questions on this topic also? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Kate Goodrich Roofing Project with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve your roofing projects with Kevin's Roofing to begin projects as weather and funding permits.
A motion by Nubs. Do we have a second?
No second.
Second by Linda. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Kate Goodrich Steamer with an attached topic summary sheet also from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from the Facilities Committee. Do I have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the purchase of a newly diacryc steamer for Kate Goodrich.
Motion by Nubs. Do I have a second?
No second.
Second by Linda. Any discussion or question on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is refinish the gym floor at Kate Goodrich with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul? Recommend a motion to approve the refinishing of the gym floor at Kate Goodrich by Basements. Motion by Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett. Any discussion or question on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the baseball scoreboard donation with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kristi?
I recommend a motion to approve the purchase of a baseball scoreboard pending it is fully funded by donations.
Motion by Kristi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett. Any questions or discussions on that motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Our next item on our agenda this evening is a Conexus Credit Union donation. Attached, we have a donation form and information from Karen Baker. And we do have a recommended motion this evening. Do we have a motion? Brett?
I agree.
Go ahead, Maria.
I recommend a motion to approve the donation of $350 to Duffle Valley from the Max Credit Union Gala at $2,500 for children at the elementary level.
Motion by Maria. A second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a technical change to Policy 8330, student records for our Bylaw 0131.1. Our superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through formal rulemaking procedures. The superintendent shall inform the board of any such changes at the next regular board meeting, such as this evening. At the March 9th, 2020 Policy Committee, the committee recommended the following technical correction to Policy 8330, student records, striking out the notation there, seeing Form 8330 F16. So this is an informational bit on our agenda that the superintendent is using his authority to make that technical correction. Next item on our agenda, if we're following along, is letter M as in master, such as the Master Facilities Plan. From a facilities and financial perspective, we have that as a standing agenda item where we have updates, highlights, and scheduling discussion on this project for the Master Facilities Plan. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sample first, and then we'll see if Dale has his hand raised for anything to add. Dr. Sample?
Our thoughts are to, were to have a board alt workshop so that we can dedicate all of our time and information to this. I'm still keeping that as scheduled on April 8th. It's gonna probably look very much like this though, so I wanted some feedback. It's going to probably look very much like this, though, so I wanted some feedback from the board if, as if this is going to work. I can't see any other option because I'm not anticipating the Governor to lift the order of limiting gatherings or banning gatherings of 10 or more. So I'd still like to be able to do that. There has also been, well, I'd be off-topic if I said that. So for that April 8th, that was also going to be the CTP Committee just prior to that. Then we were going to go into the workshop. Also on that evening, it was a DAPs technical help event, not to discuss evaluation or anything else, but the technical side of it. And so it doesn't need to be closed session. We can still have everybody in attendance somehow. No food. It's changing quickly. So it's still going to be a DAPs technical evening, and I'm just looking for permission then to go ahead and schedule that April 8th so we can talk about building configuration. We're adding to the document every day, and so we're going to have plenty of information for us to talk about building configuration and the data to have educated discussion around that.
Unless we hear more from Governor Evers restricting that number from less than 10, that was the thought to Dr. Sample and myself to advance the planning on this and to share any configuration updates instead of continuing to do this on a committee-by-committee level. This way, everybody from the Board and all of the directors, be it virtually or in person, would be hearing the same thing, getting the same directives from the Board. And that was our goal for the April 8th with the secondary opportunity if anyone was having technical challenges getting into DAPs or needing reminders to do our third formative. It would not be to review that at our second formative. We had decided that we were far enough along, but if there was any issues with new updates in the technology, that's where that would be, just to make sure everyone was meeting our deadlines and our guidelines for putting that together. And hopefully, we would be asking one-on-one if needed of Kesha or Ginger's assistants or Eddie or Ryan remotely in this time when we're not meeting together, that we would be doing that to log in. However, that was our thought there for DAPs. So this is an additional reminder that during this time, feel free to be logging in and putting information in there as Dr. Sample is putting information in his, on his own behalf as well as far as artifacts and different things going on. Anything else to add, Dr. Sample or Dale? I can't see the monitor to see if Kesha, Dale's hand was raising.
The only other, the only other consideration that we had was to potentially move the finance HR meeting to the following week. It is now scheduled for April 1st. Just getting me why to move that, but if we tentatively moved that, we could flop some dates around. Never mind. If we had an alt meeting scheduled on the 7th, my idea was as long as we've got our administrators here, which they won't be here, it's going to be virtual. And then we piggyback on that and we move the workshop to the 7th, so.
Right. I think that we'll, we'll have to even see as we'll get to later on the committee side that what happens with that and all that schedule hands out in future planning. Mr. Smith with a question?
I guess more of a comment in that while we do our planning for the Master Facility Plan, I think it's imperative that Kesha continue to master this format because we're not going to be meeting as a group. But as long as we can call in and we get better at teleconferencing and videoconferencing, I think we can continue to move in the direction that we have, so.
Go ahead, Kesha, you had something to add?
Yep, I have a comment on just the virtual concept in general, but I believe, Dale, did you have something and potentially Brian about the facilities plan that you wanted to add?
John summarized it good this last week and a half, but it's pretty fast-moving stuff. So the way to me is how we can change our plan a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have anything, Brian, anything else to add?
I had a follow-up on communication from DBI just now on the lunches, so I can figure that out or I can send that if that would be a chance.
Is there anything contradicting what we've already discussed?
We asked for clarification on who could pick up meals. A parent can only pick up meals for their own child. The child does not have to eat with them, but they must be the parent.
Okay, any other questions on that to the Board?
No, but I guess just to follow back up to the videoconferencing, I imagine at some point, I might have to videoconference in and more and more people. So I think between now and whenever we want to move things in the right direction, we should all kind of get on this virtual forum.
Right. And that's what I was going to suggest. So right from our perspective, from our end, the biggest challenge is obviously being able to see everyone and hear everyone. So if everyone can be in a place where they have Wi-Fi with us and could tune in themselves via a device that had a microphone and a camera, which all iPads do if you do not have another alternative device that you prefer, it would be, I would say, ideal to all tune in virtually via the Google Hangout. There is another call feature right within that calendar invite, so if you can't, if you opt to not do the video feature, right above in that calendar invite, there's a call in option as well that we encourage. The only thing that I'm going to put more guidance on is how this is handled from an open meetings kind of law standpoint and how we would offer something virtual. So we would have to work, we would want to do a public Google Hangout, if that makes sense. So we'll have to work through the logistics of that, but in the meantime, it would be good for everyone to kind of verse themselves, take a look at that calendar invite that I sent today, the directions and the guidance that I sent today, and then I could do a one-on-one just test call with individuals so that they can ensure that their Wi-Fi is strong enough, their sound, visuals, things that are clear. So I'm not sure, Dr. Sample, we could maybe get on a call with the attorneys or whoever you've been in contact with to verify what our flexibility is because I know that flexibility has changed throughout the week too, specifically when it comes to closed session. So I can, I would assume that they would maybe allow for more flexibility just with the open meeting laws in the world, but I will be looking through your guidance on that one.
They have provided some flexibility, but right now, the latest that came out just three hours ago was that they are still not bending on the five, in our case, five with a nine-member board, five people being physically present to form a forum. And so that part is, I'll continue to ask because that may change too. In the same paragraph, they also say, okay, you need a quorum of people physically present, but make sure those people are six feet apart. So it may change.
Okay.
So we'll stick, we will, we will go with that. And then Kesha, can you send out an update on anything for tips and procedures for making virtual learning easier so that we can begin to master that process? I know that you've got it embedded in the calendar and the Google invite and the calendar invite, which is nice, and then it's just a matter of clicking on it and then joining the meeting. But we'll just need to make sure with the finer points, like ultimately, headphones and a microphone are nice ways to go. You know, that's, that's kind of what we have to do too. And we'll, we'll play with it with a couple of different people, three different people when we get into close tonight about some different rules. But any guidance that you can give us to streamline this process would be helpful.
Sure. It's also helpful from my perspective to know if there's any board members that are for sure not going to be in attendance because then I can be in direct contact with them in advance to make sure that we've done a test. Like I said, knowing that Maria was going to be out, we did do a test, whether or not. I think the Wi-Fi is maybe lagging a little bit tonight, but we, we can, if I know there's going to be multiple people, I can make sure that we have arrangements for a conference call that is very similar to what John just did. We can merge multiple people from an iPhone so that they can have that same experience that Maria has currently as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for helping me.
Not a problem.
Anything else to add on this topic? Otherwise, we're going to move down into the consent agenda.
Do we have anything with a motion that says?
We did not have a motion. It was only informational and updates at this time. There was nothing to motion on this evening, Nubs.
Okay.
With that being said, I will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I will ask if anyone would like anything pulled from tonight's consent agenda. Otherwise, I would ask if we have a motion this evening. John?
I motion to approve consent agenda items A through F, which include second readings and approval of Bylaw 0167.3 Public Participation at Board Meetings, Bylaw 0100 Definition, Bylaw 0121 Authority, Bylaw 0143 Authority of Individual Board Members, Bylaw 0164.2 Special Meetings, Policy 1130 Conflict of Interest, Policy 3230 Conflict of Interest, Policy 4230 Conflict of Interest, Policy 3213 Student Supervision and Welfare, Policy 4213 Student Supervision and Welfare, Policy 2210 Curriculum Development, Policy 2260 Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Opportunity, Educational Opportunity, Policy 2260.01 Section 504 ADA Habition Against Discrimination Based on Disability, Policy 2261 Title I Services, Policy 2261.01 Parent and Family Member Participation in the Title I Programs, Policy 3340 Grievance Procedures, Policies 4340 Grievance Procedures, Policies 5113 Open Enrollment Programs, Policies 5330 Administration of Medications, Policies 5517 Student Anti-Harassment, Policies 5630 Corporal Punishment, Policies 6325 Procurement Federal Grants and Funds, Policies 6605 Crowdfunding, Policies 7440.01 Surveillance and Video Surveillance and Electronic Monitoring, Policy 7540.01 Technology Privacy, Policy 7540.02 Web Content Apps and Services, Policies 8146 Notification of Educational Options, Policy 8310 Public Records, Policy 8320 Personnel Records, Policies 8390 Animal and District Property, Policy 8800 Religious Patriotic Ceremonies and Observances, Policy 9130 Public Requests, Suggestions, or Complaints, and Policy 7510 Use of District Facilities and Auditoriums. The deletion of Policies 6220 Budget Preparation, Minutes of the February 19th, 2020 Meeting, Claims, Vouchers, and Receipts totaling $2,825,195. Personnel Report, which includes the retirement of Melody Jones effective at the end of the 2019-2020 School Year, and the hiring of the following limited-term employees. Spring Musical Musicians Lynn Curry, Bailey Iwan, Amy Raditz, Mary Primo, Philip Burrclaff, Amy Chula, and Jessica Wenzel. Summer School Principals Tricia Dieter, Alex Meshick, and Brad Potter. Middle School Assistant Track Coach Mandy Petz, and Middle School Softball and Head Coach Scott Semlin. Merrill High School Olympic, Special Olympic Track Coaches Gina Krause and Trina Poligee, and PRMS Head Girls Soccer Coach Nathan Grams, and donations totaling $714.73.
A motion by John, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, and go Maria. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Board Member Ratliff would have abstained, but he has left the meeting. Items for future meeting and possible action to approve the future discussions thereof. We will continue to pass that information along through our committee chairs and discuss that as we will put those on committee meetings if there is time allowed. Otherwise, we will talk to myself as the current Board Chair or Dr. Sample to put that on upcoming Board of Education meetings. Go ahead, John?
I have a recommendation or a request that would be pertinent in organizational meeting. Where would we do that?
Not tied to policy?
Be tied to board member compensation.
Let me check on that to see where that would fit. Good to HR Finance.
Let me see, is it Brian and HR or would be?
It's typically a function of annual meeting, but I'm not sure that it only lives there.
Okay.
Between Brian and I, we'll figure.
And I can send you my idea email.
Okay.
Gotcha. Don't mind sending that email, John, and copy Kevin, and then we'll figure out where we can.
Sure.
Where we can address it.
What was that?
What was that, Maria?
We can share it if we want. Could you share it? Chairman?
You can go ahead and share it.
As long as nobody replies at all.
Yep, do not reply at all.
Just say it right here if you like.
You can go ahead and make a quick note of that, and we may end up taking it through a committee, but just so your topic is known and heard this evening, go ahead, John.
I would like to propose that at the organizational meeting that payment for meetings only occurs if the board member is present until adjournment of both open and closed sessions. And I'll be making that request to the President and the Superintendent.
John, can you repeat that for the virtual group, please?
I would like to have the opportunity to move that payment for meetings for the board members only occurs if the board member is present at adjournment of both open and closed session.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
The topic will be adhered by Dr. Sample and myself, and we will get into that with Brian Dasher as well. And I will work with Paul through on the, any policies that may be tied to that being that Paul is the current Chair of our Policy Committee. We're getting a little feedback. Is that from your phone, John?
Yeah, it's from Maria. She's either whittling something with steel or there's feedback.
Maybe she ordered chickens in.
Are you gathering your chickens?
There.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Anything else to add on this, this topic for the good of the order? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Next, we have, just for our tally, a, on the agenda, the Board Decision Financial Impact Summary. We do have a radio appearance scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, March 19th, at 8:15 a.m. on the Blue Jay 730 radio station. Dr. Sample and I will work out the logistics of that based on the health and safety concerns. That is a phone-in interview only now. So we will go through that and make sure that one of us or both of us are present on that show. And the next item is future meetings, and I just ask everybody to bear with us. I will tell you our current schedule, and then if anything is changed, we will get you updates as we go. But the current list of future meetings, as we know them, are as follows. The Finance Human Resources Committee meeting is set to meet next on Wednesday, April 1st, at 4:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. 1st at 4:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. The Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting, CTP, is Wednesday, April 8th at 4:30 in the boardroom. We're working on the special board meeting slash board alt workshop for Wednesday, April 8th at 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom. The school forest advisory meeting is Monday, April 13th at 4:00 p.m. out at the school forest. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting is next scheduled for Monday, April 13th at 6:00 p.m. out at Maple Grove. Pine River School for Young Learners Appraisal Policy Council meeting is Tuesday, April 14th at 5:30 p.m. out at Pine River School for Young Learners. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom or virtually as we know more going forward. Anything to add on any of the calendar events, Dr. Sample?
No, not at this time.
Otherwise, as I said, watch for postings, any adjustments on how we would log in or be meeting, and I appreciate everyone's flexibility on dates, times, and methods of not only communication but meeting. Thanks again for Kesha and her team for all the help on Google Hangout and getting people to this meeting best we could. At this time, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, per N1, per N C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Per N E, deliberating or negotiation of the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Per N F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal history or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where, per N B, applies, which if discussed in public, be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Per N G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved in 118.125, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and start now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the persons discussed. The purpose of the closed session is for number one, consideration of and possible action regarding a professional staff member's request for a leave of absence. Number two, the consideration of and possible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and start college now programs. Number three, to consider and act upon parental requests for student opt-out of state assessments, including the potential for a closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected student or students if the discussion of such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect on the reputation of such student or students pursuant to section 19.85, per N 1, per N F of the Wisconsin statutes. Any closed session or sessions will be immediately followed by reconvening in open session for further consideration and ultimately action upon these parental requests. Number four, to consider litigation strategies or options available to the district with respect to litigation with friends of Maple Grove Incorporated, and to take possible action related to the same. The board will reconvene to open session and may take action upon the matters discussed during the closed session portion of the meeting. Number five, for consideration impact of educational programs, staffing decisions upon the employment of personnel for the 2020-2021 school year, including the consideration of issuance of notices, a preliminary consideration of non-renewal to affected personnel. Do we have that motion this evening?
Someone.
Motion by Brett, and a second by Maria. Do we have a roll call, please, Nubs?
John Smith?
Aye.
Kristi Stellingworth?
Aye.
Maria Volpe?
Aye.
Wendy England?
Aye.
Nubs Ashby?
Yeah, aye.
Paul Pro?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Jeremy Ratliff?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye. At this time, we will take a recess to turn our local microphones off, to turn our recording off, and to secure the property for closed session, and then we will reconvene in seven minutes, approximately.